Okay. Okay. All right, I call this Nelsonville Planning Commission meeting to order on August 19th, 2020. And we have with us several different guests that are all part of City Council. If you would like to introduce yourselves, so the public knows who you are.
Elizabeth Jones? Elizabeth Jones?
I think it's just the speaker, I think.
All right.
Justin Bees as well.
And our Code Enforcement Officer Becky Berger, Sarah McMillan, our Secretary, Anthony Davis, member of the commission, as well as Fred Holmes and myself, and I currently serve in the position of President. I think we should probably go straight to the agenda and see what Becky has to present to us, and then if one of us has any matters that we wish to discuss, or if council members attending wish to interject, I think that would be okay. Should I ask for approval from each member? I want for that to be done, is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
All right. It's up to you Becky.
Well, I think I gave all my paperwork.
Here.
I'm gonna get Dan here. So the vacant property fees went to council, and council tabled it. Greg Smith wanted me to bring Section C and D to your committee to get approval, because it deals with zoning. Yeah, it deals with zoning and demolition permits. So basically, the vacant property fees, if you would look at the sheet that I've got highlighted, what happens if, and then I also gave you the, what our code is, the registering of vacant properties. So basically, this was passed, the registration of vacant property was passed a few years ago. The fees were not established. It says in Section 91706, "A vacant property registration form and registration fee shall be filed with the city manager. Fees for the registration of vacant property shall be established by separate council ordinance." So I'm bringing forth an amendment to 91706, which is the fees in that section, to establish a fee schedule. And when it went to council, they tabled, they wanted you guys to look at Section C and Section D, and then make a decision and bring it back to council.
So do council have issue with those two things? I mean, I don't.
What we had issue with is we could not pass it as written, because it has those two provisions in it, which needs to come as a recommendation from the planning commission. It can't just be put in. And we did not want to pass it without those, because we feel like that's more of the teeth of it. So if it was on the books, and there was no issue with that, you give me like a zoning variance or something, then why would you pay the fee? So we felt like, yeah, so that was some of the issues that we had with it.
So Becky, you, your presentation to us, that's our last meeting when we met, I was trying to remember, you explained the same matter to us at that time, that, you know, we had the ordinance in place, but we never had had it taken under consideration by council to set fees, and that this is hampering you in being able to move forward with this?
Well, we talked, yeah, we talked about a couple of things. We talked about putting a slip on the building with the owner's name, so that if law enforcement or fire is there, they would at least know that there was, who the property owner is, who they can contact. And we kind of just shoved that off to the side, and we didn't really talk about that anymore, because we had agreed, I mean, you can talk about it too, we agreed that maybe that's too much information to have posted. Some citizens wouldn't want their name on the buildings. So we kind of just started talking about a couple of other, I mean, we've got a whole, I've got a whole list of stuff that you guys, that I've given you guys that maybe we need to look at and try to work on, but that was one of them. So we then started talking about, what was it, this was before COVID. We started talking about tents, camping in the cities.
Well, that's actually May.
RV parking.
Yeah.
But we haven't met since May.
No.
Yeah.
No.
So what happened was, this fee has been established in three cities in the state of Ohio.
The same exact fee?
Well, I changed the amount around. It was much higher in larger cities, so I tried to lower it, that maybe would best suit Nelsonville. Because some of the places were like god awful prices, it was like $35 to $5,500. Yeah, so, and started out with $500 and not $100.
So that would carry over to the following year, if in fact the owner of that property did not be forthcoming and pay?
It would carry over every year until the building became occupied. That's the whole idea behind, it's part of the idea behind this fee, is vacant buildings are such a drain on our community. Vacant buildings that are unfit and habitable. It impacts, it increases crime, it decreases property values, and it just has a negative impact on the neighborhood's quality of life. I get a tremendous amount of calls about vacant buildings. I get calls about animals coming in and out of vacant buildings. I get calls about people living in vacant buildings. And they're very stressful calls for the individual to make. They live next door to it, their health has declined with a lot of these callers. I did some research and found that also our, our city doesn't have the finances, and sometimes even putting it on the taxes, we don't get fees for mowing. We don't get fees for boarding up a lot of these buildings. And so I'm hoping that, and a lot of these buildings have went back to the banks. We've got seven, I think it was seven buildings, I don't have the numbers in front of me, seven buildings since I've been here that's been registered as vacant. And we all know, we all know the neighborhood, or this area, that there's more than seven vacant buildings.
So that's my question, is the last time that we tried to amend a section of code, we were told that anything in existence is grandfathered in. So if this is passed, the ones that are currently listed as vacant on the books would be exempt, correct?
This is just establishing a fee. That's all it's doing.
Okay, so it's not?
So we've got, I just gave you a copy of the code, which is Chapter 917. You got a copy of that, and then I gave you a copy of where we want to amend 91706, which is the fees. This council hasn't established the fees yet. And part of, part of creating anything, we want to, I always make sure there's no loopholes that individuals can jump through. Some of the loopholes are C and D, and it's the body of the code, basically. And so, as Elizabeth stated, council wanted you guys to hear this and establish C and D, before they could pass it.
So we're just looking for approval of C and D by the planning commission?
We're looking for, I would say, what, a complete approval of the fees altogether?
Recommendation fees.
Recommendation, yeah.
I make a recommendation that we approve the fees as listed under 9176A, and also including Section C and D.
Fred, why don't you read that?
So it's, how about B?
Well, B too, yeah.
I actually.
I'm not excluding, I just, yeah.
I do have a couple of other questions, I'm sorry, before we move forward. I would question that $100 is not enough. So, I mean, and I understand we have to start somewhere, so I do get that. However, a lot of these vacant buildings, the people that own them aren't even paying the taxes on them. So why are they going to pay $100 fee? And I understand it rules, I mean, I read the stipulation, but, so that's my first comment. And then the second is, what will this fee be allocated towards?
Okay, so it all says in here.
Okay.
So the owner of a vacant building shall pay a fee of $100 for the first year the building remains vacant. For every consecutive year that the building remains vacant, an annual fee will be assessed at double the previous year. So it goes 100 to 200, 200 to 400, 400 to 800, 800 to 1600. And it says that in Section A. And 1600 to be used for the fifth in all consecutive, sequent years of vacancy. Okay? So they're not paying property taxes, so we can't recoup the money of boarding it up, we can't recoup the money of mowing. So when we assess to property taxes, we only get a percentage. The city only gets a percentage of anything we assess. And I can't tell you right offhand what the percentage is. Some of these houses that are vacant, they're, they all are different circumstances. It could be an individual inherited the building and didn't want it. It could be that an individual bought it, and they're waiting for the price of property to go up, so they're holding it, and thinking, oh, you know, maybe I'll hold it a couple of years and my investment will double. Some people have properties and they start renting, and then are like, oh, renting's not for me. But then they can't come off the property, they hold it. Some people have them for tax deductions. Some people have them because they just can't afford them, and they don't do anything with them. So we're not going to hit every aspect with these fees, with every issue we have in town. But we will create movement with vacant buildings that are setting vacant, because a person wants to collect their tax break. We will move buildings if an individual says, I don't want to rent, but I don't want to sell it for $20,000, what I bought it for, I want to sell it for $80,000 from somebody, so I'm going to hold on to it. All those things take place in the city. And so people hold on to them, they don't mow the grass, it could be people that live in, live out of town. Or maybe this person bought a property and they refinanced, and they've used all the home equity, so now a $20,000 building they bought, now they owe $80,000 on the building, because they borrowed money on it. So I think that creating a fee will establish movement in the city. We're not talking about our good wholesome landlords that really care about the properties, and maybe it was vacant for a couple of months or six months, and they just haven't got a renter yet, because college student levels down. We're not talking about folks like that, we're talking about banks that just hold on to the properties, and they never put it for sale with real estate. Real estate agents do this as well in our community. So I think we're looking at a whole huge round, I don't know, a holistic kind of issue in our town. This isn't going to cure every single one of them, but it's going to help move some people.
Are these people paying the water in the sewer bill?
I don't know. I'm just saying that it's, so saying what I just said, giving examples, I don't really look into all of them. I've only got seven registered property.
Well, it depends, well, if they have, if they plus it connect.
That was why I, you know, if they haven't registered it, they're paying the water in the sewer bill. They should be.
If it's not turned on, they probably aren't.
Is it reasonable to raise that $100 to $150?
I mean, that's a lot of money. We've got to look at our community, I mean, it's $100, and it'll be $200 next year, and then next year will be $400.
But if we're talking about banks, if we're talking about, if we're talking about banks who are not putting in with a real.
We're also talking about individuals that own buildings.
Maybe it would make more sense to start off like this, and then put in a clause to reassess it on an annual basis?
We can always raise fees, it's just, we've never raised fees.
Well, that, I know, that's the other issue that we're looking at.
We can always, council can always raise.
I would feel better starting at $150. I think if we're really serious about this, then let's be serious about it.
My opinion, $100 versus $150 is.
$50 more.
Yeah, but in the midst of thousands, I don't know.
So what were you thinking, a higher fee than that, $500 the first year?
I just want to, you know, make sure that we're, I guess what I want to do is put a mechanism in place where we can, you know, we're passing this along, so are we going to reevaluate it in a year? And say, what have we learned, is it enough, is it moving the needle? Do we need to increase the fee, decrease the fee? I mean, like, that would be my thing, is just putting something in place so we're reviewing it. Because to your point, we don't really do that. And if it doesn't work the way we intended, then maybe it's not a fee, maybe there's another way to look at this. I don't know, I don't know that $100, or $150, or $500, I, $100 feels silly to me when you're talking about thousands, but so is $150.
That's why I said $500, that would get your attention. I mean, in all seriousness, if you're a financial person, $500 is a lot more money than $100 or $150, and thinking, gee, next year, it's going to be, it's going to be $1,000, you know, and I already owe $500, you know, just, I don't know if it'll make any difference at all. I mean, it's a sad situation, but we need to do something that says, we're not going to let this continue. Because I think that's what we're trying to do here, is to improve where we live, and to be proud of what we have. And if that, this is what it takes, then this is what it takes. I'll be shocked if council would in fact endorse the $500, or even the $150. I, that's never been, you know, a big thing here, they don't seem to want to enforce anything on people. And yes, you may ask.
I want to ask, Becky, did you benchmark the fee schedule with like another city, like beside of Nelsonville? Or did, well, I guess I'm wondering where, did you just come up with that? Or did you find it in another city that has, you know, similar characteristics of Nelsonville?
So I found it in several cities in Ohio, and I looked at their kind of income level, I looked at several different factors. And some of them were $500, some of them were $1,500. And I just, part of my job is compliance, I don't want to make it so horrific that an individual will not comply, I want compliance as well, you know what I mean? So.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, you know, if you've benchmarked that, like how you came up with that. The only other thing I want to add is, in Section A, the way it reads, to me anyway, for the first year the building remains vacant, that almost sounds like after it's been vacant for a year, you pay the $100?
It doesn't have a timeframe. So. The timeframe would come from our Chapter 9.
So once you register, the building is vacant?
Well, in Chapter 9, it says 30, it says 60 days, I'm sorry, 90 days. So there is a definition of vacant building, means a structure that is unoccupied for 90 days or more, which constitutes a structure unfit for human occupancy, an unsafe building, a building or premise that are a public nuisance, in the case of structures containing multiple dwelling units, multiple commercial or industrial units, or combined thereof. A building shall be considered vacant when a majority of the units are unoccupied, unless any part of the building is considered unfit for human habitation, unsafe or a public nuisance, then the entire premise shall be considered subject to these regulations. So basically, we're just setting a fee, we're not setting what a vacant property is. No definitions, nothing like that, we already have that in place.
Yeah, I'm just saying the way this, I'm saying like, to me, when I read this, so the owner of a vacant building shall pay a fee of $100 for the first year the building remains vacant. So to, like, when I read that, I think you're saying, after it's been vacant, it remains vacant for a year.
No, it's the first year the building is vacant.
That remains vacant, to me is, makes it, it's very ambiguous for somebody reading it. I think it should say, like, the owner of a vacant building shall pay a fee of $100.
At the time of registration.
And then it doubles, you know, when it says remains vacant, to me, like, somebody could come back and say, well, I've only been vacant for 120 days, it hasn't remained vacant.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it's just a little ambiguous, yeah.
So who, are the citizens coming forward and registering? You said seven have happened, how does that process happen? And I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar with.
So anybody that has a vacant building, they have to contact me. Just like if you sell your rental, you have to contact me.
Right.
No one's contacting me, it says it in the code, you have to contact the city. So I find them, and other people that work for the city or citizens call me. And then I send them a letter about this, the vacant registration and that application.
Do they reply?
Sometimes.
Okay, so you have had communication then with?
I brought some people that have vacant buildings, I haven't registered, to court. I do bring them in the court when they don't register within 30 days.
So Elizabeth, I'm just wondering if to your point, if you say something like $100 is due at the time of registration, nobody's going to come forward and respond positively? So maybe it's something like, you identify, if you respond to this correspondence or something, and state your intention, and if it remains vacant for another 30 days, then, I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of like, how you get compliance, to your point?
I'd bring them to court if they don't comply.
Do you have a list, Becky, in general, do you have a general idea?
I have a commercial and residential list, yes.
Besides the seven that have registered, you have a general idea of how many other vacant properties there are?
I have almost below the ones that have registered, of ones that I know that are vacant. And then I've got 24 buildings that I'm condemning, or 25 now. I don't know when a student moves out and a rental stays vacant for six months. Those, those aren't even the issues here.
No.
We're not even discussing that. So when there's one code officer, and there's a, is a lot of stuff to do in the city, I prioritize stuff as health, safety, you know, fire safety, that's how I prioritize stuff. I can't do everything, because there's only one officer, you know what I mean? Everyone knows that. So I prioritize the worst, I work on the worst first. So it's like, I don't know, Anthony, if he has a house and it's vacant for six months, and it's kept clean and nice, I don't even know that, you know what I mean?
I just thought perhaps that there had been some type of a survey done that says, we're not getting compliance. I've seen five more houses or buildings that are unoccupied. I did not mean it as a criticism.
No, 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 I know that, I'm just saying, I don't know, I mean, really, I don't.
Okay.
Unless you guys tell me, unless the citizens tell me.
When would the fee be assessed? So let's just, when the person registers, then it's assessed?
So when a building is vacant for more than 90 days. Okay?
Okay.
First of all, I'm going to put this out on all of social media, like I did with the trash cans and the shopping carts and all the other stuff, right? And we're all going to share it on social media, and share it on the city webpage, so that it's out there. That's the first step. Second step, the houses that I know currently that are vacant, they're a problem, I'm going to be sending the property owners a letter, giving them this information right here, with this, when it's added on. They're going to be given this in the mail, and they're going to be giving, giving me, I'll give them 30 days to respond to me. If they don't respond, I'm issuing them a citation in the mayor's court, and we'll get from there.
I have a thought on that too. Maybe if they register immediately, they pay the $100 we're talking about, but if they don't, 30 days, if you want them to file, I could. That would incentivize me as a property owner to make sure I register and pay my $100 before I pay $400.
So if I didn't want to go and round up everybody, I'd just issue a citation in the court. And then if they don't come to court, then I think mayor's court's being worked on to where, if people that don't come to court, there's going to be another piece to that. I think we're currently looking into how Athens is doing it. So we've got all these people that are noncompliant, that don't come into mayor's court. Our council clerk, or I mean, our mayor's court clerk is talking to the attorney in Athens, and she's talking to some folks in Logan, and seeing what they're doing. Because we have a stack, and this is all topic, but we have probably 75 citations where no one's appearing. So what are we going to do with this? This would be the same way, if people don't appear, they're still going to have to be ordered to pay the registration, they're still going to have to pay mayor's fees, and they're going to have to pay a fine. So there's a couple of things that we can do, and it's being looked into right now, because if we want to go full enforcement and code enforcement for the folks that aren't coming in and complying, there's got to be another piece to that. So I'm doing my job, and I'm getting, you know, I'm getting compliance, and then I have noncompliance. Noncompliance comes in the mayor's court, if they don't come in, then it's up to the mayor, the acting mayor, to take care of them not coming in. What are we going to legislate, what are we going to do here to create compliance? And I think what's happened in the past years is there's not been a lot of people that were issued in the mayor's court. I mean, you guys can do a records request if you like, with Angie, and she can tell you how many people has been brought into mayor's court prior to me coming here in the last 10 years, for code. And so we really don't have, we really don't have a past practice of what we need to do, and we're trying to establish that. But with this, if people, for anything with code, if there's noncompliance, I issue a citation into mayor's court. They come into mayor's court, and then they also have to pay a fine and a mayor's court fee. So there's more money there for them, you're better off to comply, and that way, spend your money elsewhere, you know?
Okay, so after your first round is over, with the 90 days, and then the, so moving forward, we get past all of that, your $100 is due at the time your property is officially registered as vacant. Okay, so I think that that needs to be cleared up and A. And then I would also like to put in a provision to just ensure that this is reviewed annually, and just to, you know, with a report review on the fees that were collected and the results.
So which one of you in your committee will be doing that and sending it to council?
Well, it'll go to Gary Hummer, I mean, our recommendation will go to Gary.
Okay.
And then Gary will in fact, I'm assuming if he has questions, contact us.
Okay.
Or contact you directly, or Scott would not be how it would be.
Typically, that's how it works. You know, I just had a thought, I mean, I sat through a couple of these conversations, and I don't know why it didn't come to my head sooner. You know, so I, we're working on a house for my daughter, and it's vacant. You know, so, but it takes a while to fix it up. You know, so do we need to have a construction permit as well, that's almost equal in value as the lower ones? So that way, somebody just doesn't say, well, I'm under construction.
Well, I was going to say, if you're working on it, and it's obvious that the code enforcement officer perhaps could go there and review it, inspect it, and if she in fact finds that, then it's not, it is not vacant in the manner that we're referring to as deteriorating and falling to the ground, which is what these properties are, I believe, that are. It should be included in there that if in fact the owner is remodeling the property, and every 30 days, the inspection shows that, that the fine or registration fee will not be implemented, however. that the fine or registration fee will not be implemented. However, should this not be the case, then the fee is immediately implemented. You know, it just adds more things to it, but.
I agree. That's something that we did, we talked about, that, um, like what would those exceptions be, right? So like if you're working on a house, but it's going to take six months to rehab it, but technically it's vacant. Because the way that, um, that each other, the way that the code reads for vacant property, it just says, it means a structure which is unoccupied for 90 days or more, or, this is harder to read, outside of that 90 days or more, which constitutes a structure unfit for human occupancy. So if somebody moves out of a house that basically, you know, needs to be condemned or whatever, you know, on day one, it's vacant. If it's unfit for human occupancy. Other properties, it takes 90 days for them to be considered vacant. So I agree though, but if, if you're rehabbing, which is what we want people to do. That's the whole point of this, right?
They wouldn't be charged the fee.
But I agree that that needs to either be somehow entered into these definitions, um, which would be, sometimes amended in the code, or in this, like exception would be an active rehab, right? But then that brings up a whole other.
Right, because well, one particular, I was in a residency the other day. They just recently went for sale and it was under rehab for two years. You know, so that kind of.
It's a lot different.
So then what does that mean, you know?
Was it really, I mean, was it really under rehab two years? That's what they've been saying. Really, they've been renovating it for two years, like a total one.
Absolutely. It's marting now for sale.
I don't know that they swung a hammer, uh, once a month in there, once every six months. You know, I don't know what the frequency was. And I guess that's where the, where the confusion comes in, you know? Because I would think that, you know, if you go in there and knock down a wall right before your ear is up, you can say, I'm under active construction to avoid the fee. And therefore, what is even the point? If it's that easy to get out of it.
Well, it's not fit to live in. I mean, I know that's probably a technicality, but I think of a property here in town that the roof is sliding off on it, the two sides of it have collapsed. And I'm like in total shock. Becky, I took her up there one day because I, I just couldn't believe it. That's definitely not being rehabbed.
And that's clear, clear cut.
Right. I know, but I'm just saying. Oh, I know.
So I think at some point we'd have to put it in your discretion to make that call.
You're going to have to explain it.
Well, I think that's how the code, that's how it's written. The property maintenance code, international property maintenance code is discretion of the code officer and everyone has to trust that.
Right. I'll do the right thing. I mean.
I'm in favor of an annual review, but I think what we have to do tonight is establish a fee.
Agreed.
And personally, I'd like to see it a little higher than $100. I don't know how you feel, Anthony.
Yeah, higher is fine with me.
I don't know how you feel, Betty Jo.
I definitely think it should be higher.
We have a citizen just for what it's worth commenting on Facebook, $100 a month.
$100 a month, maybe a little high.
I'm just sharing what's up.
Yeah.
Folks are really, really wanting this in our community. I hear it on a daily basis. I'm out and about and they come up to me. Um, they're wanting something done and as their code officer, I felt like it needed to be taken care of because it was, there's a lot of complaints I received.
Our town's in bad shape. Yeah.
I'm going to recommend, well, I'm not going to recommend anything. I'm going to let somebody else recommend.
We just had another citizen chime in, $250.
Okay, that's what I was going to say. Okay, can we?
A max of $5,000 after five years?
Can we agree? Can we?
That was Cincinnati's. I believe it was Cincinnati's.
I get a second on the $250.
Can we get a third?
I'd have to give a count.
Well, if you double in five years.
Not five years, it'll take four years. You need to give a $1,500, right? $250, $500, a thousand, and then $2,000. Sorry, you would give the $2,000 in year four. And that might be the cap.
So our recommendation to council will be $250 registration fee?
Wait, to start off?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Sounds fair to me.
Sarah?
Would we say in five years? Don't go to five years, go four years. Do we want to go to four years to $2,000 or? $500, a thousand. Five years. $2,000. Or a year five, you'd be at $4,000.
I'd say go to $4,000.
I'd say go to $4,000. But, um, if you guys feel that's all steep, then, maybe $2,500.
It's an incentive, it's an incentive for them not to go to the four year.
Right, and that's the whole reason behind the fees. Yeah, it's the, the whole reason for this is to get reoccupancy in buildings.
Yeah.
Right. To get some people moving, get your properties rehabbed, get them sold, get them rented, get whatever it is you're doing. Yeah, and that's what other towns are doing and that's why I thought this would be a good tool in my toolbox to be able to. They have found success, yes. Cincinnati, I think, has eight code officers and they have one code officer that just, I mean, they're a big city, that just deals with vacant property.
Another citizen's comment that I think kind of sums it up, just to reemphasize the $250. They said $250 is low enough to not match someone trying, but high enough to be on someone's fiscal radar. So that gets their attention, right? And then once the building's rehabbed, it gets refunded, is that correct?
If they rehab it within that year, yes.
Within the year.
Minus any administrative fees. Meaning if I had to move the grass that year, if I had to send out postage, you know, stuff for postage, my hourly rate, those kinds of things. We're allowed to do.
Okay. Sarah, do you want to make it in the form of a motion and read it to us for approval? Or do we understand it clearly, each of us, that it's $250 and up to $4,000?
I've got that written down so I can send it to Gary. What else did we want to change?
We wanted to change the verbiage in A to be more specific.
How did we want that?
As to when the fee is assessed. The owner of a vacant building shall pay a fee of $100.
That would be $250.
$250 at the time that the building is registered as vacant.
Okay, hang on here.
And then I think it's important that is, will the fee be assessed then on an annual basis after that or January 1st? Because I'm trying to keep track of.
Well, I do. I have a spreadsheet. I keep track of everything. Okay.
So one year from the first initial registration.
Is registered vacant. We don't put one year, we just put, the owner of a vacant building shall pay a fee of $250 at the time the building is registered vacant for every consecutive year that the building remains vacant. And then we want to go from there. And what else do we want to change?
Review annually?
Do we want to do a C, section C? So C.
I don't know that necessarily has to be a part of this, like to put it into this document. I'm just saying it's something that I personally would feel more comfortable to know that we have.
Well, we'll have to put it in this document because we're not revising the whole.
No, no, I mean, in terms of having that discussion around whether or not this is effective, I don't think that needs to be called out in any of this. I just, you know.
Are you talking about the annual review?
Yes.
Yeah, we can just do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to put it in here.
Okay.
Gotcha. The only other thing I would say is if the building goes to land bank, it would be totally, it would be forgiven. Do we need to call that out?
Um, I have a forgiveness in here. I gotta find it.
So we're going to change that second part there. Annual fee not to exceed $4,000 over a four-year period, something to that effect.
Oh, okay. You know how we wanted it to, section B covered that first year thing. The first annual fee shall be paid at the time the building is registered.
Okay.
So it's already in section B. I thought I put that in there. So do we really want to change all the verbiage on A when we got it on B?
No, I would say the only thing we need to do then is change that to the $250 and the $5,000. But again, this is our recommendation to council. So we're not, this is not anything set in stone. Our job is to give a recommendation. So that's what we're doing right now.
There is a forgiveness. Let me find it.
It's right in, is it the top, B?
I wanted to make sure I did some kind of forgiveness for, I didn't specifically say land bank because I want this to last for 20, 20 years, you know? So there could be another agency come in and take over vacant buildings. So I didn't want to specify anyone in particular, you know what I mean?
So where is it? Where is the?
In B, it's listed, it clearly states that there have been no violations associated with the property, the fee shall be refunded, less than administrative charge equal to the cost.
Well, that says to me that if you paid the fee and then you rehab the building, then you get your money back.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily say that if the land bank comes in that that fee is forgiven.
Okay.
Well, it says, if the owner restores the building to occupancy or demo this.
Okay, I mean, as long as you guys feel it's covered, I just.
Well, I think again, it's according to the code officer and the city manager. If we feel like, I don't know, somebody like Hocking College bought a building, they've been buying buildings that are vacant. Um, and they've been buying them for certain reasons. You know, if we wanted to exempt them because they're slowly working on it or waiting on their grant or whatever. I don't know, the city buys vacant buildings, you know? Same with the land bank.
I think Gary would have to pay any exemption, especially with college.
I'm comfortable with no exemption. I'm comfortable with the way it's true.
Okay. All right, so all we want to do is change $250 and $4,000.
$5,000. What is he, didn't we say $5,000? Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay.
Is it $4,000 or $5,000? Elizabeth, it's numbers wrong. The max? Yeah, for five years.
Okay.
This is what you guys are recommending.
Okay, this is. That is our recommendation. So, all right.
And then don't forget the, the C and D, which is the big.
Yeah, he called it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I included it.
Fred called it, didn't. Okay, so I think we need to do the official again.
She turned me to me. I make a motion that we, um, raise the fee from 100 to 250 with a maximum of $4,000 over a four-year period. Is that correct?
Right.
Yes.
We make a recommendation.
We're making a recommendation to the council. We include A, 9-17-06, A, B, C, and D.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. I think it's important that both Elizabeth and the other council people who are here tonight are able to, when this goes to council for consideration, understand that the violations associated with the property should be refunded less than administrative charge equal to the cost the city has accrued. That the council understands that means cutting the grass, that this is not some fee that code enforcement is assessing themselves. It's actually if we have made an investment in keeping this property up to a certain point. Sometimes those things get confused. Okay. Do any of you have any other questions? I know the only thing that was listed we were doing is this. So is there anything in the future when we meet in September that you'd like to just note tonight?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. I would like for you, for us to all talk about the schedule of fees for the city. And I did give you a copy there of what they are right now.
Okay, so real quick, just for procedural and time and everything else, I just want to clarify, especially for viewers at home, and if the procedure's wrong, then shame on me. It's my understanding that council requested the commission to look at the fees and make recommendations and that's what you guys are doing. No fees are being set and these are merely just recommendations that's going to go forward to council. Who will then decide if they want that adjusted or not want it.
Absolutely. That is true, yes.
Yep, just want to clarify that for all the viewers at home. The thing is, there's no slapping of the table now and.
We have no power to do that. All we do is make recommendations.
Rather than that. Thank you.
And then I would like for us to, for the committee to look at, chapter nine, section 12.10, livestock and animals in the city. I'm sorry, can you say that again, please? 9.12.10, animals livestock control in the city.
Okay, so after our May meeting, we had determined, a list of prioritization based off of the things that you had brought during that meeting. And at the time, I believe, we had said camping was the number one and then farm animals and then recreational vehicles and boarding rooms, trash, and vacant zoning codes. So would you want the schedule of fees to be considered before camping? Would you want farm animals moved up, I suppose, is, like, how should we prioritize those?
The night we did it, I think we, and I researched and actually had the material for it. I'm surely proud of myself tonight. I went to look for it and I'm not sure what I did, but I'll find it. I, camping, Becky, with the being this time of the year, is probably, should be at the top for you versus the farm animals. I mean, that we're going to discuss, the farm animals.
We did pass an anti-s scavenging law already. So that's taken care of.
Okay, okay, so we don't have to worry about camping.
Yeah.
Anti-what?
Scavenging. So when people are scavenging in your trash, they can get charged now?
So I can take trash off of the list.
Yeah, they can get charged for misdemeanor, a minor misdemeanor, a $150, I think it's a $150 charge. So if you don't give them permission, they're down there and they're digging in your trash before, law enforcement would say, can't do anything, there's, there's no laws against it unless you put up a no trespassing sign.
Okay, but the camping is still out there.
Yeah, yeah, the anti-s scavenging was so easy, so.
So would you like the schedule of fees? Do you think the schedule of fees should go in advance?
How do you want them prioritized? What do you think, Sarah?
Anything finalized, camping season, the year, for this year, I think the fee schedule is probably the most important. You know, the farm animals, I don't know how much of a problem that is. I know it was brought up, but I'm not sure what your complaint frequency is on that.
I, well, so it depends on the individual that's got the animal. If someone's got a smelly animal, they complain more than they would somebody that takes care of the animal and that doesn't make noise.
So you're going to have to be schedule and animal, whatever, when they want to pick first.
Yeah, fee schedule, animal, and then camping. Did I end up, did I end up sending you guys to camping one month? You did.
What about the one you had researched, Fred?
I had researched and sent it to everyone.
We just haven't met since then to discuss it formally. So I think that needs to definitely.
I read it, it looks good.
Stay on the agenda. I had some questions, but I was going to, again, like you, I was waiting to meet and we didn't. So I think we should, we should table that and then I guess we'll get schedule of fees. But I would also just ask that in the future, we be giving these in advance and then we can prepare and have them on the agenda so I can give that out to everybody. And then we're prepared and we don't have to wait till next time.
Okay. Can you put me in that email list?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, yeah, that'll work. I did email stuff like months ago, a lot of stuff months ago, and then we didn't meet for so long.
Right, yeah, I just like, like this, it's just what I meant. Like, I would have preferred you researched it. Like, I would have preferred you researched it.
Sure.
And come into this.
Sure.
Makes sense. Well, makes us more prepared.
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, we appreciate all that you do.
Yes.
That is for both of you. And we also appreciate the input tonight from those watching in support of what we're hoping to accomplish here. Thank you. I now move, we adjourn.